All right, let's call the meeting to order. This is the Village Board of Trustees' Public Hearing at 6:30. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Trustee Mason?
Here.
Trustee Luther?
Here.
Trustee McNeil is absent. Trustee Martinez?
Here.
Trustee Pierce?
Present.
Present.
Mayor Gardner?
Present.
All right, I'm gonna ask for a quick motion and a second to go into executive session to discuss potential litigation.
So move.
Motion, trustee Peterson.
Second.
Second trustee Pierce, roll call, please.
Mason?
Voting yes before the meeting?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Pierce?
Hi.
Peterson?
Yes.
Five voting yes, motion carries. We will be back in the regular meeting. If adjourned or anything, okay. All right, it's 7:02. I'm gonna call the public hearing back into session. Do I need roll call again on this? Roll call, please.
Mason? Trustee Luther?
Here.
Trustee McNeil is absent. Trustee Martinez?
Here.
Trustee Pierce?
Present.
Trustee Peterson?
Present.
Mayor Gardner?
All right, this is a public hearing regarding the planning and zoning board recommendation regarding a request for voluntary annexation of not less than six properties along Northeast Drive and North Lake Shore Drive in unincorporated Antioch. I'll read the addresses, 4051 Northeast Drive, Antioch, 40480 North Lake Shore Drive, Antioch, 40508 North Lake Shore Drive, Antioch, 40553 Northeast Drive, Antioch, and 40579 Northeast Drive, Antioch.
Attorney? Sure. So the neighbor, the property owners at the properties listed by the mayor have requested to annex into the Village of Antioch. Their annexation contingency comes in through a change in the law, a novel change, and this is the first time it being used, or these are the second time, and the first time being the first time we did this, was through the waterway. That is a 2023 change in the law. It has never been used for these purposes before. As such, we are having the public hearing. It is a voluntary annexation pursuant to Section 7-1-8 of the Illinois Municipal Code, and they have a petition. Notice has been provided. There was a planning and zoning board recommendation meeting last night. Recommendation was provided on there. If they are annexed, I just wanna lay out the law for everyone. They can disconnect easily within 12 months and any time thereafter. I'm actually litigating three disconnection suits at this point in time. So for the purposes of this public hearing, that is the law on the matter. The, what we would do now is we would ask if there are any public comment first from the public, and then from the board, and then we would proceed thereunder. So, Mr. Mayor, I would ask if anyone wants to speak on this, or anyone signed up for public comment on these annexations, now would be the time.
See one that clearly states regarding this annexation. Michelle, is yours regarding this matter? Michelle is... The second one, also regarding the annexation, the second part of the annexation?
Second of the public hearing.
Okay, of course. Okay, all right, so, Madam Clerk, do you wanna have the first individual? Michelle, Mary's the one that's gonna speak on this one.
Mary Worth?
Yeah, let's swear everybody, I mean, it is a public hearing.
Hearing is factual to the best of your knowledge, yes.
I don't need the timer. It won't be three minutes, okay? I have a statement from our neighborhood. So we, the residents of North Grand Avenue, Northeast Drive, and North Lake Shore Drive, support annexation into the Village of Antioch. Our intent is to have a community that aligns with Antioch's motto of authentic by nature, so that the common law, common land uses, visions, plans, and ordinances are governed by the Village of Antioch. We, the newly annexed residents, have greater faith in the Village of Antioch to remain true to their values and to stand up for what is best for the community. We see that the Village of Antioch leads by example through thoughtful development of the community, from attributes like the Aqua Center, the library, Seacote Park, and community events. Please know that this annexation process has brought our neighborhoods together. It's increased friendships, and we've also discovered hidden talents among our neighbors. We want to be part of this community and trust that the Village of Antioch will do what it can within its capacity to support the best interest of its residents.
Thank you. Anything from the board?
Okay, I'll ask for any comments.
Yeah.
Start, turn around. I'm still getting used to this.
I understand the folks wanna come, come into Antioch who wouldn't. My, my concern is 911 service to the, to the community is, that's a pretty, pretty big hike from a response from North Antioch or Clublands if you had a 911 call. We've had the same size police department, same size manpower for pretty much 10 years. I think we should have an ordinance every time the population changes. That would key in for a new officer to be automatically hired. We don't have that ordinance. But I certainly don't want, and I know you got garbage for Lake County Sheriff and whatnot, it, it, it just puts the rest of Antioch on a response when you've got officers involved in a domestic or whatever, and they can't leave, and you guys get a call, and you're two, three miles away. That's my concern.
Luther, do you have any comment?
No comments at this time.
Trustee Martinez, any comment?
I'm always in favor of anyone that wants to join the bunch.
First of all, my only question, my, my question and concern is access to these properties. Are these all down Beech Grove Road, or do we have to come in through Grass Lake Road to some of them?
Currently Grass Lake Road is my understanding.
So that would, that would go with trustee Mason's response time question, and whether the Antioch Police Department or the Lake County Sheriff's Department, I, I think service is great.
Okay, all right, any comments, trustee? All right, then I'd ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move.
Motion trustee Blueheart. Second trustee Peterson, roll call, please.
Mason?
Yeah.
Luther?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Pierce?
Hi.
Peterson?
Yes.
Voting yes, motion carries. All right, now we are gonna call to order the second public hearing, also was scheduled for 6:30 PM. Roll call, please, for this meeting.
Hearing for the forcible annexation.
Correct, yep, okay.
Trustee Mason? Trustee Blueheart?
Here.
Trustee McNeil is absent. Trustee Martinez?
Here.
Trustee Pierce?
I mean, present.
Present.
Mayor Gardner?
Present.
All right, this is a public hearing regarding the forcible annexation of a parcel of property not to exceed 56 acres adjacent to Northeast, Northeast Drive, North Lake Shore Drive, and Grand Avenue. I believe there's, I'm looking for any type of public comment at this time. I believe, why don't you call up the...
Michelle Shaw? Yeah, I guess, please. You solemnly swear the testimony given this hearing is factual to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, it is. Michelle Shaw, I'm on, I'm on the other side of Beech Grove Road, and I've only been in the home for five years, but as I was looking for a lake, lakefront property, including just over the border in Wisconsin, what drew me to my home on Hickory Street was the 227 acres of forest preserve and just the tranquility and beauty of the location. And, you know, if a solar farm were to go into this location, it just would detract from what brought all of us to this beautiful chain of lakes. So I'd ask the zoning committee to take that into consideration, that it just does not fit into, you know, what we are trying to enjoy day in and day out. So thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, not yet. Well, just one thing, just for those here and those watching and looking for transcript. As you may or may not know, the next hearing for the Lake County Planning and Zoning Board is October 30th at, is it 1:00 or 2:00? 1:00 or 2:00 PM at the library, so I encourage anyone that, you know, is making statements here to come, because it's still under their jurisdiction at this point. What, Village Attorney, why don't you explain a little bit about the forcible annexation procedure?
So, under Section 7-1-13A of the Illinois Municipal Code, a municipality, when, for a parcel of not to exceed 60 acres, when the property is wholly bounded with some exceptions, and there's some case law exceptions on there, can forcibly annex a parcel of property into its corporate limits. This is a different process and procedure. It is exactly what it sounds. It is forcible. It is something that is being imposed upon someone rather than someone coming to a village and saying, "Enter my boundaries," or allow me to enter your boundaries. There are some elements to this that I have mentioned, and we have discussed with regards to acreage and bounding, binding, surrounding. This is a statutory requirement to have a public hearing prior to proceeding.
Any public comment on, or, sorry, any trustee comments on this section? We're here, anything, anything on this end?
Just, just one quick question. Would a public hearing be required if it was bound by, or would just be a...
No, in all instances, for a forcible, a public hearing is required, and we are satisfying that requirement tonight.
Thank you. All right, so if we're done with this matter, I'd ask for a motion to close this part of the public hearing.
I moved.
Motion trustee Pierce. Second trustee Blueheart, roll call, please.
Mason?
Yes.
Luther?
Yeah.
Martinez?
Yes.
Pierce?
Hi.
Peterson?
Yes.
Five voting yes, motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. Look, you guys, we have a third public hearing tonight at 6:30, so I need a roll call for this public hearing as well.
Trustee Blueheart?
Here.
Trustee McNeil is absent. Trustee Martinez?
Here.
Trustee Pierce?
Present.
Trustee Peterson?
Present.
Mayor Gardner?
This is a public hearing on the election by local government entities to accept credit cards pursuant to 50 ILCS 3345/20 in the form of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing and approving credit card acceptance rules and credit card surcharges or convenient fees for credit card transactions carried out by the Village of Antioch. I know this has been one that's been discussed several times at the committee of the whole meetings. Is there anything we need to add at this point, attorney?
Do you wanna make a statement?
Yeah, okay. Anyone from the public wanna make a statement about this item? Any of the trustees wanna discuss this item?
Just a quick question, and why does this require a public hearing?
Because the state statute says it does. Like, it's literally, it's a statutory requirement, that if you wanna do this, we have to have a public... Answer. Trustee Martinez?
The one thing I read here was, we're looking at charge 2.95% per transaction, plus an additional 50 cents.
That's correct. The 50 cents is actually going to BSNA, and it covers the, whenever, I think, a credit card doesn't process through, or there's a chargeback, that'll cover that cost, so then we're not on the hook for something they have got, something that was charged and that we provided a service or a product. It doesn't come back on us, we'll still have our money in the hole.
You know, one of the things that comes to mind is, one of the, one of the items we're listing here is that I have a problem with charging as concessions.
Yeah.
And just because I see it at the pool, and just like, you know what, people don't carry cash alone at the pool, they're, we're gonna be charging them 2.95% and an additional 50 cents for a 50 cent item?
Right, so what we're trying to work through right now, BSNA Payments, I believe, has the ability for people to pay with Apple phone, Apple Watch, sorry, and we're looking at, can they do it by Zelle, Zelle Venmo, whatever, and then there'd be no fee?
Recharge.
So that's what we're really shooting for, and so we just have to kinda work all that out, and Katie just let me know that there's actually a rule also that says that if it's credit card, it has to be $10 or greater. I wasn't aware of that rule, so I think the ordinance...
That's our rule. We can change it.
Once the rules are in place, though, they, I think that the ordinance says that the mayor and finance director could make the changes. So at this time, the rules that we have in front of you are the rules that we're starting with, but as things go along, we may make changes to those rules.
Pierce?
A follow-up, so we're gonna charge an extra 50 cents per transaction in case somebody's transaction fails.
It, it covers the cost of...
So everybody else is paying for somebody else's failure.
Correct.
Yeah. You know, I'm not in favor of this anyways, but that, that just really, I, I can underst, I can almost swallow not having built into our cost of business like people used to do, using a credit card or, or whatever, but because everybody now is charging that extra fee, but I can't, I don't think I can necessarily swallow other people paying for somebody else's failure, so I'm gonna have to really mull this over for a few...
So we could tweak that 50 cents, I'll turn it around. We could tweak that 50 cents after the thing?
No, that is, that is from the BSNA payments. That is their, that is their arrangement with us to use that service.
That's contractual with the credit company.
Yes.
At this point, then, we could eat that 50 cent fee.
That I have to ask them. This is like, it's a whole billing thing. You'd have to give me a chance to look into that, so if, I don't know if there's a way to make a motion that says if there's, if there's the ability to absorb the 50 cents, I don't, I don't know that, so...
Peterson, did you have any questions?
No.
All right, then I'd ask for, unless there's anything else, I'd ask for a motion to close this public hearing. Motion trustee Blueheart.
Stuck.
Second trustee Peterson, roll call, please.
Mason?
Yeah.
Luther?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Pierce? Peterson?
Yes.
Voting yes, motion carries. All right, now onto the regular board meeting. I'll ask for a roll call on this meeting now.
Trustee Mason? Trustee Blueheart?
Here.
Trustee McNeil is absent. Trustee Martinez?
Here.
Trustee Pierce?
Present.
Trustee Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Gardner?
Present.
Present. I didn't have anybody else wishing to address the board, so if not, I'll move past the public comments. First is one item on the consent agenda, which is the approval of the October 8th regular meetings, meeting minutes as presented. Do I have a motion and a second?
So move.
Motion trustee Peterson, second trustee Pierce, roll call, please.
Mason? Luther?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
All right, next is item number two on the regular business, consideration and approval of payments of accounts payable as prepared by staff in the amount of $1,670,128.80. Do I have a motion and a second?
So move.
Motion trustee Peterson. I got second trustee Blueheart's. I'll just note on this one, you may have seen in the packet, this has the full payment for the Woods of Antioch road program, correct? That's the big number on this, like, almost a million dollars.
Minus retention.
Minus retention. Any questions or comments on this item? All right, roll call, please.
Mason?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Pierce?
Hi.
Peterson?
Yes.
Five voting yes, motion carries. Next item is consideration and approval of an ordinance repealing ordinance number 25-08-27 amending the Antioch Village Code regarding a natural gas use tax. Ordinance number 25-10-65. Do I have a motion and a second waiving the second reading?
So move, waiving second reading.
Motion trustee Peterson.
Okay.
Second trustee Blueheart's. All right, as you see in the package, I don't know, there was some language I asked to be tweaked this morning. I don't know if that went through yet. Do you wanna explain the...
So there was an effort to increase extraterritorial taxing, taxing on other gas users, non-residential gas users, and it, again, was an aggressive approach under the law. Nycor refused to follow this, and they said that they would not cooperate with us on there. As such, they would not, they would refuse to be able to collect the tax, and without Nycor being able to collect the tax, we would be in no position to be able to impose the tax. This does, you know, there's no way to get the tax unless Nycor says it's okay. Nycor said they wouldn't do it because of the way the statute is written, even though there is an argument to the opposite. So our legal advice is to repeal the tax based upon that conversation with Nycor.
And partly based on our non-home rule status is...
If we were no home rule, we could just supersede that, but we are non-home rule.
All right, any other questions on that item? All right, roll call, please.
Mason?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Five voting yes, motion carries. Next item is consideration and approval of an ordinance authorizing and approving credit card acceptance rules and a credit card surcharge or convenience fee for credit card transactions carried out by the Village of Antioch, ordinance number 25-10-66. Do I have a motion and a second waiving the second reading?
So move, waiving the second reading.
Trustee Peterson, motion, have a second?
Second.
Second trustee Blueheart? I know this has been discussed, and we just had public comment, so I guess, call the...
I just wanna make one other, because I didn't make it during public comment. Right now, we have the government closed, so if someone has to use a credit card just to pay a bill, I don't think we should be charging people in need, and there should be a way put in there to ask for forgiveness, even though it's $10 or whatever it is to pay a water bill.
Are you talking about a waiver?
Oh, a waiver clause, so there's a mechanism in there if someone had a reason.
Well, it's probably, it's probably a policy thing that the village had to pass, right?
What's the question? Are you asking if we can waive the...
Like, if somebody came in and said they, you know, poverty level or something, that's...
Poverty, they had to use a credit card, and like a government shutdown, they had to do it, they're bad, they're on this, or death in the family, they had to do a credit card because the bank account was frozen, and we have some type of waiver that they can recoup the $10, and it could be more than that if it's based off of, you know, two-month water bill, two, you know, or two-time water bill.
Right, so...
Or even signing up for a summer event, government shutdown at summer, that they want their kid to not be left out. I don't know. I, I just think we, we should have some mechanism in there, so if someone comes in, we can look at each individual case of hardship, a hardship clause, I guess.
Right. So the only way I could see it, being able to do that, is we would have to enter a credit. They're still gonna get, how's that gonna work? They're still gonna get charged. It's a program. There is nothing in the program that would let you override the fee that's built into the software.
Sure.
So it would, the only way I could see kind of a workaround would, it would have to be something like, we would put a credit back to their utility bill.
Kind of a rebate or something?
Yeah.
Two percent.
We'd have to, we'd have to, we'd have to do the calculation of what that charge was and then credit it to them.
That'd probably be a village policy that we'd have to write up, right? Because that's not part of the contract, obviously.
That's what I'm saying. You can't, you can't change how it's programmed.
Sure.
I mean, I can't do that.
You gotta create a policy to wrap it around. We may never even have to use that policy, but it'd be nice to be there if someone does, that they don't, you know, a six-month water bill, we sit there and say, well, you gotta pay 2% on top of that.
Again, my, I encourage everyone auto debit. It's the cheapest, easiest, most efficient way, not credit cards. That's the most expensive way, and that's what we're trying to solve for tonight, is that the village wants to operate in the most efficient manner, you know, in cost-effective manner, and by going auto debit, the resident doesn't pay. The village pays 27 cents per transaction, but it is the cheapest and the easiest way to collect efficiently.
Question?
All right, roll call, please.
Mason?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Pierce?
No.
Peterson?
Yes.
Four voting yes, motion carries. Next item is consideration and approval of an ordinance annexing the properties along Northeast Drive and North Lake Shore Drive into the Village of Antioch, including but not limiting to the following addresses, 40451 Northeast Drive, 40480 North Lake Shore Drive, 40508 North Lake Shore Drive, 40553 Northeast Drive, Antioch, and then 40579 Northeast Drive, Antioch. Do I have a motion and a second?
So move.
Motion trustee Peterson. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So this is, let me, let me look here at these notes. Okay, so first off, I'm gonna ask for a motion to consolidate items five, I, one through five, which are all the properties. We need to do each one individually, is that what, then, okay, so can I get a motion to consolidate those five parcels into one vote, please?
Do I have to rescind my motion?
Never second.
Okay.
Okay, so motion trustee appears to consolidate those into one vote?
All of East?
All of, all of, yeah.
Eastern Lake Shore.
Yep, correct.
Second.
Second trustee Peterson. All right, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mason?
I'm gonna just base it off, because I don't have enough knowledge. I'm gonna do no vote, because I don't have enough knowledge of the police department.
This is to consolidate all of...
Oh, yes, yes, I'm sorry.
Luther?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Pierce? Peterson?
Yes.
Five voting yes, motion carries. Next is six, consideration, oh, sorry, back to five. Now we gotta vote on these five items. This is to approve the first reading of the annexation ordinance. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Motion trustee Peterson. I got second trustee Blueheart. All right, roll call, please.
Which, which one now?
This is now the ones we consolidated, number five.
The first reading of the consolidated.
Correct.
Yeah, I just gave my statement on the police. Welcome, everybody, but this is kind of far from the village's limits. So, no.
Yeah, roll call.
Mason? Luther?
Yeah.
Martinez?
Yes.
Pierce?
No.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Gardner?
Yes.
I don't know.
It's procedural.
Yes, so four voting yes, motion carries. Six is consideration and approval of an ordinance entering into an annexation agreement for the properties along Northeast Drive and North Lake Shore Drive into the Village of Antioch, including, but, but not limited to the following addresses, same ones, 40451 Northeast Drive, 40480 North Lake Shore Drive, 40508 North Lake Shore Drive, 40553 Northeast Drive, and 40579 Northeast Drive. Do I have a motion and a second to consolidate these into one vote?
Moved.
That was a tie.
Second.
All right. Motion trustee Blueheart, second trustee Peterson. Roll call, please.
Mason?
There's a consolidation one.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I'm trying to keep up on the notes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
All right, five voting yes, motion carries. Now, roll call on voting on the ordinance itself.
Just ask a question. The annexation has been voted approval so far. This vote is to authorize the attorney to write the ordinances, or?
No.
We doing, what's the difference between these two votes? We doing, what's the difference between these two votes?
So the second one is for an annexation agreement. Um, if anyone wanted to come in with an annexation agreement to allow for the execution of the same, it requires for full approval. It would require a super majority vote. Um, but the first step is you have to approve the second, to waive the second reading by our own statutes. So I, I guess I, I don't understand your question.
Well, item five, we did an ordinances annexing the properties.
Correct, and we waived the second reading, but we've got.
Not, we did not.
We got the second reading on that.
First reading.
We, we did first reading only on.
Correct.
And then this item, item number six here.
Correct. Is an annexation agreement, so if someone wanted to come in with an annexation agreement. They could come in with that agreement, and we would then execute that pursuant to this, it has a the government returns terms of the annexation. So if you read it, one is for annexing, and the other one is to have an agreement that governs said annexation. All right, does that help?
And this is only the first reading on both.
Again, we have to always, every ordinance in the village has to go first reading, second reading.
All right, any other questions on that? Clear as mud, all right, um, I need, I need a motion and a second on that.
Lawyers.
Don't move.
Motion trustee Blueheart, second trustee Peterson, uh, roll call please.
Motion is to approve the first reading of the consolidated items.
Correct.
The first reading of the consolidated.
To consolidate the properties.
We already did that.
Now we're doing that.
The first one is approve the ordinance, the second one is to approve a written document.
Luther?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Pierce?
Aye.
Peterson?
Yes.
All right, uh, four, four voting yes, motion carries, um, next is, um, consideration and approval of an ordinance enacting a forcible annexation for a parcel not to exceed fifty-six acres adjacent to northeast drive, north Lake Shore Drive and Grand Avenue, do I have a motion and a second?
I'll make the motion to enact the ordinance for forcible annexation, annexation not to exceed fifty-six acres, acres to northeast drive, north Lake Shore Drive and Grand Avenue. With not waiving the second reading.
I have a motion by trustee Pierce for the first reading.
Yeah.
I get second trustee Blueheart, um, any other discussion on this, roll call please.
Isaac?
Um, no.
Luther?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Pierce?
Aye.
Peterson?
Yes.
Four voting yes, motion carries, next is the administrators' reports.
Thank you, mayor, um, there's a couple of things, so this should be our last board meeting before the LakeCom transition happens for, uh, nine-one-one dispatching service for our community, we'll roll into the consolidated center effective November fourth. Uh, we are working on a messaging strategy to make sure that the community is aware of what's taking place, um, what the minor impacts may be. Uh, the new non-emergency number, those, those kind of smaller operational things that are taking place, and of course, there's a lot of things happening behind the scenes to prepare our staff for, um, operational changes that we'll experience internally. Uh, we did have our kickoff meeting this week with Arntman Municipal Services, uh, to begin the process of the recruitment for our next village administrator, um, they're preparing a job posting, I believe that's supposed to go live on Friday, Jim, is that correct? That will go live on Friday, um, for, for applications and resumes to be submitted. Um, and then we have a lot of work to do, uh, the tentative plan right now is to work towards a January appointment of the next administrator. Um, I began my transitional plan, I'm working with the system, administrator Moran to, uh, to work out some of the details of what the transition may look like. Um, every department has a lot of things going on right now, and just ensure that that is seamless and that we don't miss any, miss any of the, uh, important things that we're working on, and that it's as smooth as possible, um, that plan is, is being, um, prepared well in advance. Uh, at the committee of the whole this evening, we're gonna talk about an agreement with S B Friedman relative to some work on the marketplace. But extending beyond that, uh, the attorney and I have engaged in some preliminary discussions with F B Friedman, um, who is also our TIF consultant, um, to begin discussing, um, some arrangements that may be necessary if the village does anticipate going down the road of, um, redevelopment downtown for some of those mixed-use proposals that have come before the board. Um, that will require some work by S B Friedman, so those talks have started. I met this week with, uh, Chief Kazian from the first fire protection district, you may recall several months ago, there was a proposal that came before the board for fire alarm monitoring consolidation, uh, through F S S. So Chief Kazian has been through this before, he's got a, a much broader, um, experience having gone through this in his prior community as well, he has his own set of thoughts on it that, while similar to Chief Coke fares are a little bit different, so he plans to come before the board in December and present to the board and answer any questions you may have, so we can get some direction from the board, and this is something that we would even be interested in moving towards. Um, today was business liaison Kim Beederman's last day with the village, um, she is moving on to take a position with Arlington Heights. Um, nobody can fault her wanting to work on the Chicago Bears project. Um, so I just wanna take a moment to acknowledge her and thank her for all of her work that she's done for us while she's, uh, while she's been part of our Antioch family here.
I'm just glad she didn't choose the Packers.
I said, this isn't the first or last.
Those Packer fans, can you believe them? Ooh, tough crowd. Um, I'm happy to announce on the PD side of things, um, we did recently arrest a fifteen-year-old juvenile in connection to criminal damage to property that happened to Sequoia Creek Park, uh, you may be aware that back, um, in early September, we had a, um, incident where somebody went into the, one of the restrooms with a electric, um, e-bike, and were able to do a, this better suppose we put is a burnout within the bathroom, they were able to do a lot of damage to the epoxy floor within the bathroom. Um, nearly eight thousand dollars for, to be able to correct that, just due, due to the necessary grinding, that's gonna take some preparation for the coating. Um, so thanks to our, uh, our relatively robust public, um, public surveillance system that we have within the park. We had a very good description of the bike that the kid operated, as well as clothing descriptions, um, took a little bit of time because he was wearing a masked helmet. However, during the homecoming parade, one of our officers did observe, um, somebody matching the description with the bike. That individual was referred over to the detectives, was subsequently interviewed, confession was obtained, so they have been, um, charged and referred to the Lake County Juvenile Court System for felony criminal damage to property, and we will be seeking restitution as part of those, um, those juvenile delinquency pre- proceedings. Uh, and then I think, um, I think that'll be it, unless the board has any questions of anything. Thank you.
You. Village clerk?
Uh, yes, today is the seven-year anniversary of, um, our staff in the front office, Kelly Morris. Um, so I just wanted to thank her for always having a positive attitude, she is the first point of contact for many customers and residents of the village, and she's always, always has a smile on her face and, um, and a positive attitude, so just wanna thank her for all her work the last seven years, and also to announce that Monday we have a new HR general, starting with the village, um, so we're very excited about that.
All right, um. I feel like I missed the, on the mayor's report announcements, but I don't know, do they have some holidays or dates that Halloween? I got trick-or-treating hours coming up, four to seven, uh, group leave pickup, if they don't pick up your leaves, call group, don't call me. Um, I'm kidding, but. Anything else we missing on the mayor report, okay, uh, any, okay, trustee reports, anything? All right, if not, ask for a motion to adjourn the regular meeting.
So moved.
Motion trustee Peterson?
Okay.
Second trustee Blueheart, all in favor, any opposed, all right, we're gonna take, uh, we're gonna adjourn at seven forty, five-minute break, and we'll come back for the committee of the whole meeting. All right, we're gonna call the meeting to order at, uh, whatever time this may be, seven fifty-three, uh, roll call please.
Trustee Isaac? Trustee Luther?
Here.
Trustee McMillan is absent, trustee Martinez?
Here.
Trustee Pierce?
Present.
Trustee Peterson? Mayor Gardner?
Present. All right, um, no citizens wishing to address the board. Um, we have the approval of the item on one, the approval of the October eighth, twenty twenty-five committee of the whole meeting. Minutes as presented, do I have a motion and a second, motion trustee Blueheart, second trustee Peterson, roll call please.
Isaac? Luther?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Five voting yes, motion carries, item two, consideration of the planning and zoning recommendation related to a request for a variance related to setbacks from the front and side property lines for the construction of a porch to be located at three twenty-nine Park Avenue, Antioch, Illinois. Uh, PIN oh two oh eight, three oh six, zero five zero, um, any presentation on this, it was in the packet, it looks like it's a a variance consistent with, uh, the street and the area, uh, Jimmy was at the hearing and maybe Jit, I don't know who to call on this one anymore.
It's a, it's a perfunctory matter.
Yeah.
It's a perfunctory matter, there's nothing unusual about this, we have recommended.
So moved.
Oh, no, this is a discussion, so, can we just move this to the next board meeting?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, we'll move this to the next.
A map or drawing of what this is?
Uh, sure, uh, we like the, um, the drawing from what they've submitted for the.
Correct, okay, just so we have a visual of what they're trying to propose.
Okay.
I can't read no more in front of.
How, how wide is the porch, just for?
Um, where is it?
Like, from the front door.
Oh, here, come on up, sir. They're asking, what's the size of the porch that you're, uh, putting in, in on this property?
It is, uh, six foot out, twenty-three and a half, ten foot tall.
It's got a roof going over it?
Yes.
Nice.
Are you gonna have rocking chairs on there?
Maybe.
We may have to. Any other questions for the applicant?
No.
All right, we'll move this to the next board meeting then, which will be the twelfth? November twelfth for the approval, all right, thank you, sir. Um, next is, uh, discussion regarding a tobacco license request from Tobacco Creek LLC to be located at nine fifty-two Main Street. Uh, the applicant, um, uh, Ahmed, uh, Dwalde is here in person, if there's any questions. Um, so I know the board, um, received, you get thing, uh, email from the clerk today with some additional information requested. Is there any discussion regarding this item from the board?
Kinda go next to the O'Neill's office.
Oh, Brian, another, another Irish guy.
Yes, yeah, I just, Eastback shops keep coming up, and I don't understand why they keep coming up, and I saw the picture. Looked nice inside, but I just don't, I just don't get it.
Trustee Blueheart, any comments, anybody else wanna?
Not at this time.
Anybody, trustee Pierce?
I, I just wanna be very clear how I feel about this, you know, I, I appreciate a gentleman trying to make a living and doing a good job, and his pictures from his other shops are beautiful, um, nice array of, of, uh, product and everything looks great, but I look at those pictures, I see death, and I just can't support any more of this coming to Antioch, and just, that's just kinda where I'm at.
I'd like to say something as well.
Sure.
Uh, I'm, I've been perfectly clear about how I feel about these, uh, tobacco, more tobacco shops coming in. Um, right down the street from the high school, next to a health food store. Um, I, I just can't support that.
Any other discussion? Anything, okay, so.
So the question is, is it gonna be on the agenda for the next meeting? Or is that up to the applicant, uh, like, and the mayor?
No, it is, they made an application, um, they should have.
Yeah, yeah, they're telling the, so it'll be moved over to the November twelfth date for the regular meeting.
We'll not go on consent agenda.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, please do not put on the consent agenda.
Sir, did you wanna add anything while you're here, cause I, you obviously have a right to, um, uh, you gotta, I'm sorry, you gotta come up here so they can, um, hear on Zoom in the recording.
So, actually, I came to Antioch, this is the first time, this is the second visit for me, uh, at Antioch. I used to be in Minnesota, so I raised my small business, so I have like chain six or seven of them. Some of them in Wisconsin, some of them here in Illinois, so I would like to invest in Antioch City, it's gonna be cigar shop, big Humidor. I don't have any like Delta stuff or CBD or THC product, it's gonna be only ci- uh, cigar shop, premium cigar, fresh, and few vapes. It's gonna be, uh, we follow the instruction, we don't sell under twenty-one, uh, like, I have six stores, I don't have any issue with that, I didn't even sell under twenty-one in Minnesota or Wisconsin or Illinois, so I appreciate if you guys approve my.
Any questions for the applicant to write?
Yeah, I, I got one.
Sure.
When you say you're not gonna sell any Delta nine or Kratom or whatever, uh, do you do it in the other stores?
No.
You use tobacco?
Just regular tobacco, cigar, tobacco vape.
I, I, I like the cig- cigar shop, don't, don't get me wrong.
Yeah, yeah.
It, it, it was beautiful, and, and.
Some cities I have sell CBD.
Yeah.
Products.
Problem.
But not Kratom.
The problem is for you, sir, is once you get in, then you've got Carplanche to do what, what basically another store would do, and we go down that road, that's the problem with tobacco shops. We can't get a consensus that this is, because I love the cigar shop, I, I, I think you'd do well, but, but we got this Delta nine problem and whatnot, and that's where I stand with the stuff.
I, I know, but we don't sell it.
I, I, I hear what you're saying right now.
Yeah, we don't sell Delta or CBD or Kratom or even seven hydroxy, all weird things, we don't sell it, just we sell cigar and vape. That's our concept in Antioch City, because there is a lake, a lot of visitors comes in spring, so I see a lot of people asking for cigar, especially the, the premium cigar, like Cohiba, Arturo Fuentes, or Omidolly.
Oh, individually or boxes also?
What's that?
Do you sell individually or boxes of cigarettes also, okay?
Both, it's gonna be more than three hundred kind of cigar, I have like, uh, others, other stores I have walking, uh, Humidor is gonna be like fourteen foot by fourteen foot, it's a huge cigar, it's almost cost me two hundred fifty.
Any other questions by the board?
What type, what, if you were to open up, what type signage and everything would you be planning?
The signage is, is gonna be like cigar and tobacco.
Okay, so it's not gonna be bright neon flashing signs and stuff?
Regular sign, simple sign, as, as the instruction mentioned.
You consider it just a cigar lounge?
Uh, it's in my mind, to be honest, cigar lounge is very good, uh, idea and good business, especially at the lake village or lake towns, I have like, uh, business is gonna be start in three or four months in Fox Lake. Uh, near the lake, so I already invest this business, I'm in the business like five years, and I know what I have to do exactly, I appreciate everything, so each city has different law or different instruction. I follow all the instruction, I don't have any issue even, and you can go to our, my stores and see the reviews, so.
Remember the town that had a place called Cigar King, and a place like Cigar King came, that was like, had like lounge and pool tables and cigars?
Fuck, he gets got that, right?
Yeah.
My wife goes to the town specifically in Kansas, where all the women go shopping, it's own, all the stores were bought out by one woman, kinda like what we've got, but she's bought out all these stores, but right in the middle of them, she's got a lounge area just for the husbands with TV set up and cigar, yeah, all the husbands go sit there while everybody spends their money, so I, I, I could kinda feel this.
We can keep talking about certain concepts, okay, but, um, tonight's not a vote. It's one more meeting, which is our next meeting and first meeting in November.
Sounds good.
Okay.
It's gonna be on ten?
I think it's the twelfth, is it?
Twelve.
Yeah.
What's that, sir? Okay, you know about Tuca?
I don't know anything about Tuca.
All right, thank you.
It's a distant dream.
Um, item five is discussion regarding an engagement proposal from S B Friedman to. Oh, yeah, all right, obviously, this would take effect after this applicant, because they're already into the system. But we had a discussion regarding a moratorium on the issuance of more tobacco licenses, I think I mentioned recently that, um, the state of Wisconsin passed a law that, um, banned, I believe, uh, is it, it's just cigar, a cigarette, like, uh, cigarette only stores, so, um, Kim Beederman said she was getting an influx of everybody on the border over here that have cigarette, uh, stores trying to move now to Antioch, so we could have twenty, thirty applicants in this regard. So obviously, the gentleman that's here has had the application in, but we're looking for guidance if the board would like the village attorney to draft, uh, an ordinance capping or put a moratorium on the number of tobacco-related places that we have. Capping or put a moratorium on the number of tobacco related places that we have.
I would go for that, yeah.
Any, any, uh, pushback on that to get that to present?
A, a, a set number?
Yeah. Oh, was it set, what was it?
We have it for a moratorium now to undertake a study of what the parameters would be, for example, if the gentleman came in. He would be exempt from it, but what concepts would go on there? There was some discussion about scope. There was some discussion about health risks, there was some discussion about, um, what the uses are, so my, my preference would be. A moratorium for six months to study the issue. A very brief public meeting at the beginning of the, not like three tonight. But a very brief public meeting at the beginning of the next meeting that, um, we're all here. And then, uh, moratorium for six months to study the issue and determine how we're gonna proceed with regards to the tobacco license going forward.
That's a six month pause that they're proposing. To, to us to investigate what would be the best course for that, that, okay? All right, we'll move forward to that. Um, because like I said, it's a, it's a ripe issue right now with the change of law in Wisconsin. Um, next is discussion, am I on the right one now? Yeah. Discussion regarding an engagement proposal for S B Friedman to, to provide support and analysis for redevelopment agreements. Uh, Chief, you wanna propose this?
So, just very briefly, your honor, um, as I mentioned in my administrative report, we've been in conversations with S, S B Friedman regarding a number of issues. Uh, one of which is the, uh. Future development of the marketplace property. Um, as the board is aware, the developer had submitted a request for approximately six million dollars. In, uh, public assistance to help this project advance. We had engaged S B Friedman, uh, previously and they had, um, done an analysis that showed that. For the project to be successful, approximately four million dollars in, uh, public assistance may be appropriate. Uh, Attorney Viselli has been working with myself and the developer, um, on draft RDAs that have been circulating. Uh, the mayor has scheduled a follow-up meeting with the developer. To begin to talk about the structure of any, um, incentive deal that may be. In place, um, it appears that the developer may need, um, up to approximately two million dollars. In advanced funding, um, particular to, um, help the Route one seventy-three improvements that are gonna be required as part of this project. Um, in order to facilitate, um, that potential upfront funding, the village may need to seek. A TIF bond, um, which would be a, um, general obligation bond that would have an alternative revenue source, uh, that would be paid by. Um, the TIF increment and sales tax that would be generated on the site itself. Um, however, there's a number of steps to get there. Um, in speaking with Attorney Viselli, it is our recommendation that, um, to make sure that we're doing our due diligence. And not exposing the village to unnecessary risk for this financial arrangement, that we would engage S B Friedman. Um, to go down the path, working towards a, um. A TIF bond analysis and then potential negotiations of a final RDA. So what I did do, rather than commit the village or ask to commit the village to the full roughly seventy-one thousand dollar cost of this project. Was for a phased, um, discussion. The first thing that would need to be done is the, um, revenue projections would have to be reevaluated based on the most latest, the most recent data. From the developer, um, based on contracts and leases that may, they have signed. Uh, the cost of that phase one project would be eleven thousand nine hundred and sixty-two dollars. If at that point, the village decides that it is in the best interest of the village to move forward. Um, with expl- further exploring a TIF bond, um, general obligation bond. Um, there would be a need for S B Friedman to do a bond feasibility study. Uh, the cost of that study would be approximately forty-four thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars. And then to move forward with the final negotiations of, uh, the term sheet and the re- in the, uh. The RDA for this project, uh, the cost of support negotiations and draft the final term sheet would be. Fourteen thousand five hundred and twenty-eights, and that's done as an allowance. So Attorney Viselli has expressed his willingness to take on as much as possible with that component of the project to help keep the village's costs down. But we, if approved, we would be looking at total cost of about seventy-one thousand five hundred dollars. Um, which would be eligible for reimbursement through the TIF itself.
Sorry, thanks, Chief. Good, thank you for summarizing that, um. Michael, that's putting you on the spot. After the obligations to, uh, Raymond or Kia, um, have been. Uh, reimbursed, is there any money currently in that TIF account for, um, for this, just since the Kia moved in there?
Yes, there's, there's, uh, property tax money coming in for the increment and there would be, um. Let me see, so two, two, probably another fifty thousand at the moment, um, that, from the sales tax. Um, and so we have the sharing of the, uh, sales tax with Kia, um, so it is continually growing.
Okay.
Each month.
Do we have enough in there to cover this at this point, or do you know?
Seventy-one thousand.
We do, okay. Pierce?
So. If I heard correctly, they wanted six million, S B Friedman says maybe four million may be appropriate.
Four point four, I think was the number?
Four point, yeah.
Up to four point four, yes.
Four point. Four point four. But to make that happen, we may have to go out for a TIF bond. To, to, to flow to the new bond, or?
It was because my stance has always been it's pay as you go. Like, you'll get the four point four million dollars as the money comes in, but the main holdup has been this, um. Improvements for one seventy-three Brown Avenue and is it Lincoln over there? Is that the other one, uh, Lincoln? That, you know, obviously are a benefit to the village and the whole development. But if they don't get that started, the whole thing could fall apart, so that upfront money that I said no chance. I mean, that's the only way I think we'd be able to do something in that regard.
For the road, for the road.
For the road improvements itself.
Now, let me ask you this, does, if we have to go out and acquire upfront money. Does that then open us up to other entities trying to stick their sticky fingers into our pie and. And, and taking a plum out and say what a great guy they are?
On that developments?
Yeah.
Or other developments?
From, from whatever development we're working on, TIF money is over there.
I don't know, every developer I've ever talked to is completely broke when they come to, talk to.
I'm not talking about, I'm talking about government entities trying to horn in on the pie.
No, I think that this analysis already bakes in some of that to, as a little worst case scenario type thing. Like, the, the, the analysis already bake, that four point four already bakes in something, not that we're agreeing to it, but it already takes that into account, so. It's not a zero number in there to the other taxing districts. I believe the assumption they put in there was twenty percent to be safe, so they built that already into the four point four.
That, that's correct, your honor, there is.
As, as I puke on the floor right now, when you said twenty percent?
Yeah, I was, I was, um, ironically, we had a meeting with the taxing bodies, all of them today, again, one of our second taxing meeting. Most of, everyone was there, pretty much represented, Michael presented some evidence, um, regarding some exemptions, but. The consensus walking out of the room is, you know, to help these, to help our residents. We need to broaden the tax base and we need to broaden the tax base commercially, so it's like, this I think is critical for, you know, the future of. Anybody that wants to live here and not have to pay fi- ten to fifteen thousand dollars in, uh, property taxes on a regular home. Um, but we are in the room with all the taxing bodies for these exact reasons, because I think. You know, there's one group that always gets the finger pointed at them, and, um.
Well, yeah, maybe they should control their spending and not come hornin' in on what we're trying to do, is my opinion.
Yeah, so we had a good discussion today, but, um, they said those, those, um, assumptions are built into those numbers. It's not a zero, so, you know, we have some, some wiggle room there, is, I guess what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, yes, and just to further expand upon that, so, yes, there is a number that is contemplated as a. As a figure within the analysis that S B Friedman conducted. Uh, we did that simply in order to understand that if the board desires to, um, do some sort of a, a. TIF share, um, to other taxing bodies, that the project would still be able to support. The, not only the bond component of this, but is the remainder of the incentive that would be offered without having to worry about liability on the general fund itself.
I wanna be further clear, if we were to be working on this TIF thing. And we were putting in apartments and homes and kids and thing, people going to the schools, I could understand giving the schools money. But for working on economic development and bringing, bringing businesses here, jobs here and expanding our EAVs. In a business sense. To me, that's, they're, they're, they're robbing Peter to pay Paul for when they should be figuring out how they're misspaying Paul in the first place.
Buthard?
I, I would just like to, probably not the right time for it, but I'm gonna bring it up, because Trustee Pierce did, but. In regards to these other, other government agencies that are all looking for a percentage of this revenue, this TIF revenue. And I know we have an ordinance in place that waives all permit fees and inspection fees and everything for other government agencies. But I strongly feel that if they're going to start wanting portions of TIF district funds and other things, that we. Look at removing or, or that ordinance so that. Um, if these government agencies want to build and do things that we charge them the appropriate. Fees.
Yeah, so. Think it's important to find out as part of that, not all the, the taxing districts are subject to our building permit requirements. Some school districts are under the school court exempt from minutes will building permit requirements. So, so long as they go out and do their own independent, um, engineering and, um. Site development, largely they're exempt from our building permit inspe- inspection processes.
Largely, but there are times when they aren't.
Correct.
Such as when they ran their gas line across McMillan Road.
The memory of an elephant. Trustee Peterson?
Um, Chief answered my question.
So, um, are we okay to move forward with this, uh, thought process? We do have, uh, we're trying to get the developers in the room again either this Friday or next Friday, so having this, um.
Purple straw, yeah, is, like, if we could come to an agreement one of those days without having to go through this process.
Um, I still think we're gonna have to do the bond analysis, cause I don't see how that we're gonna move forward without that one seventy-three money if I'm. Reading the room, uh, when we're meeting, so. All right, um, next item is item number six. All right, it's a discussion regarding the Veterans Memorial and potential funding sources and completion plan. I see Deborah Rentner is here with the Antioch Veterans Memorial. Um, again, I just wanna remind everybody, this has been discussed ad nauseam regarding the memorial itself. Uh, there was a vote on it on April of this year, approving the site plan over, um, by, uh, uh, Seacray Peak Park and the Billbrook. Uh, wetlands, um, we are getting to the point where, um, you know, there's been. A year, year and a half of fundraising by the group or maybe two at this point. Um, I think I shared with the trustees kinda genuinely where they're at financially. Um, as you may or may not recall, I believe we've committed sixty thousand dollars, uh, roughly. Give or take some dollars from the veterans rebate, which we've already advanced some of that money towards the monument. And, um, I know that there's been discussions with Debra and the group and Josh Bowler and trying to keep this all on track. Um, for a groundbreaking at some point in the nearish future. Um, so I just wanna kinda pull the board's temperature for, you know, um, how we move the project along one way or the other. Uh, where the additional funding would maybe come from, is the village gonna invest more in this financially? Um, just to keep this on track, uh, so it's, I mean, I think there's a veterans committee, uh, of veteran, not, let's say veterans committee. There are a couple of veterans I spoke to, uh, that would've said, you know, they'd love to see a Memorial Day or. Two hundred fiftieth anniversary of the United States or something in the near future, uh, groundbreaking. So to do that, I think we just gotta keep the conversation moving, um, not relitigate the whole thing, but just figure out, you know. Is the, I mean, the preferences, my preferences, the Antioch Veterans Memorial. Raises all the funds in addition to what we've given and they're able to go forward. Um, and that partly relies on conversations with Josh and his construction group, but I just do not wanna lose. That, uh, potential. Charitable contribution element of this, um, based on any delays or disputes between veterans groups, et cetera. So it's just more of a general discussion to try and see. Are, if they're at two fifty and it's three hundred, do we close that gap? Is it something that we say, hey, we're in for the sixty? And that's our contribution, I'm just trying to understand, cause I can't commit the village to any of that stuff without the board.
You're talking, putting tax, tax money, general fund money?
General fund money, surplus money.
Yeah, we just had, we just had a meeting that we were cheap on the Public Works, we had two people vote no. Because, because we didn't want an elevator, cause we wanted to chintz on that, now you're gonna give money away. And that's safety issue.
And that's, and I guess the reason I wanna have this discussion is so that, um. The, the committee, the people working on it, the people working in different regards, understand in their minds. You know, how to plan for it.
Right, the person did all theirs by donation. That, that's how they raised, raised their, and it's a beautiful memorial, Paul Bonnok did a great job. You know, I asked for stuff three months ago, I, we got the email today, um. You know, no bank statement, so I don't know if the money's truly there, it's in an email. I'm entitled to know, and now you wanna talk about using taxpayer money. I don't have a bank statement, I don't have what's actually in there. I don't have, you know, there's, there's a, a statement in, in the email that says. Um, pledged amount or promised amount, who, who promised it? I, I, I got so much little information, I can't make and I don't wanna sit there and say, well. We put, we, we're gonna chintz on putting at Public Works, uh, uh, fuel stations. Because we're gonna spend money on, on this, that should be donated money.
And that's a, that's perfectly, that's good for this discussion, that's why, this is kinda exactly what I'm looking for. Trustee Buthard?
Um. Couple of things, and I don't, I don't wanna speak for the, for the, and, and the committee, but I'm a member of that committee and. Um, I do know that we're currently working on a better way of presenting the financials, so that everyone. Within a couple of weeks, we, we're, we're developing a spreadsheet that will show you every donor. What they've committed to, what they've paid, where that money's gone, the balance, so that you'll, you'll see all that, and you're right, you should've had it sooner. But we are, we are doing that currently. Um, our goal as a member of AVM is to raise all these funds and get it built on what we've raised. We're not looking for more village funds at this time, at least not right now. Um. Some of the committee members met with Josh on Monday. Um, and received finally from Josh a, a breakdown of construction costs. And, and some information about who's donating what and how much and so on, some hard costs, some finally, some hard actually numbers. Um. We're confident that if the community and everyone unites behind this and, and, and over this winter, we can raise everything needed to get this thing done. But we're gonna need everyone aboard and fighting the same fight to raise the remaining funds. Um. That being said, like I said, I, I, I agree with you that we need to. Display these numbers to everyone better. Um, that will be forthcoming, and I promise you that as, as a member of AVM, but also as a village trustee, I don't like the way those numbers were presented as well. Um, we are also very confident that, uh, that we need to get progressing on this, because. Josh and the contractors who are willing to donate these services. They're kinda getting frustrated with all the delays and everything else, and a lot of that's because we haven't raised the money and, and other reasons, but. They are ready to go and, and, and per the meeting, and I don't wanna speak out of, out of turn, but per the meeting on Monday. Josh is asking what permits we need, he wants to do the clearing of the grounds now and get things going, so they're ready to pour that foundation come spring. And get things rolling and get this done before Memorial Day. Um. So I think if, if, if as a board, I know that the mayor, you've supported it this summer with your, your call to try to raise those remaining funds. I think if we can just pull together, raise this remaining, it, it could be as, we might have it now, we might have enough and to, once we get everything figured out. But I think that we're gonna be a little short, but I think if we pull back together over this winter, we can raise the remaining funds to build this. Um, not using any more taxpayer dollars, um, and get it done. And I, and I'm confident of that, and, and, but there's gonna be, we're gonna need to work to get this remaining funds, but I think the first step is right. Uh, Trustee Maisick, we need to present this to you in a better way, so you see exactly what we've raised, who's committed to what monuments and what they've paid, what they haven't. Um, number of bricks, you know, we'll, 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 we'll get it out as, as detailed as we can to everybody. Um. With that being said, this is, this is a great opportunity for this village to come together, it's been, from what I've been told, and it's long before I started here. Or, or was a trustee or even a resident, they've been trying to build something like this for so many years, over two decades. We're right there, we're right at the cusp, and I think with a little push from all of us, and if we all team together and, and. And, and get this remaining funding, we can, we can get this built this spring and it will be open and, and ready to honor our veterans.
Just like my colleagues here on the board, I, uh, I know.
Just like my colleagues here on the board, I, I know we're all in favor of supporting our veterans and you've heard me say this before where I've see this memorial as inspiration for the next generation. It's the living embodiment of thank you for your service, but yet I have a hard time putting through taxpaying dollars when we have 25 other parks. We have 165 developed acreage in parks. We have one of the focal points, not only in our community, but in Lake County, the Sawmill Creek Park that needs work. It needs dredging. The, the building needs work. I had the good fortune of walking public works director on June 23rd, went through the parks, right off the top of my head, I think of that park. I go, we've got trees that need to be replaced. We got the, the water wheel that needs to be placed. We've got dredging that needs to be done. We got Jensen Park comes to mind because that's another park that we walked where asphalt is buckling. The tennis courts are buckling. We have so much maintenance and I, and granted, maintenance isn't something that gets accolades, but we have so much maintenance to do now. I think we have to let this project run its course. It's a private sector through donations. Give them time. They obviously need time. I would just say give them grace and hopefully our community comes together as, as mentioned by trustee Blueheart and we, and we get this project off the ground through private donations first.
Mike's ears perk up three times when he said dredging. Trustee Pierce.
First of all, we, we talk about excess money. Do we have a report available to us that says we've got $50,000 excess that wasn't spent last year, a hundred thousand, $500 million? Do we have any report that shows us the excess money that you were potentially talking of drawing from?
We received the audit yesterday. I had preliminary numbers and I had pushed, put those preliminary numbers in and then we had. So you have preliminary numbers and then you go through the final steps with the audit and then the audit comes out. So with those preliminary numbers that I had put in, it was 350,000 for the general fund.
350,000, thank you. I will agree with trustee Martinez that we have a lot of park issues that need to be addressed. The Chadman, I won't be calling him that very much longer, I guess. He, he'll, he'll, he'll tell you, I was talking about the sawmill this morning and dredging, fourth time your ears are up, Mike. And the maintenance items that need to be done at the sawmill and other parks. So it, it heartens me to hear that we have extra money and we should be looking at those parks to see what we can do in the sawmill, see what we can do. It will also be very interesting to see the, the spreadsheet that they're putting together for us from the AVM. I, I am curious if it's showing all dollars collected or only the dollars collected by them because I know there are outside entities that were collecting money. And if it's been funneled to the AVM or not, and if it hasn't, then where is it? And then I, I think trustee May, not trustee May, trustee Blueheart mentioned Josh is wanting to start breaking ground and know when they can break ground and get the ground settled so it's ready for concrete in the spring. Are we willing to entertain that at this moment so we can? Last night I had, I was at the VFW. My wife was working the bingo there. I was there playing on their slot machines a little bit. And I had veterans coming up saying, what's this meeting about? What's our progress? It's so much, we, we need to hear. We haven't seen anything going on. What's going on? I'm like, well, I'm going to the meeting tomorrow night to find out what's going on. So I think fundraising needs to be picked up a little bit. We need to identify all monies. And if there are extra monies, we need to look at the sawmill and we need to look at Jensen Park. After 24 years on board, I still haven't been to Jensen Park. I can't find the damn thing. There's no signage. You know, but I think we need to at this point, let them start their work to clear the ground, get it settled. And so that as the winter goes by, the, the ground gets compacted like it needs to be so they can start doing their concrete work. And that will show progress and I'll do, get a prep, prep for being done.
I, I'd like to see an accounting as well.
November, you think one of the meetings, there's, we, the second meeting is, we have a first meeting in November 12th. The second meeting is hopefully like, if we can get everyone together, like more of a capital type of planning meeting in the second part of November. So, you know, we could probably put this out in one of those meetings, maybe even get Josh here at one of those.
Does that answer the breaking ground issue or getting the ground?
I know we have, we have a building department of like three that he's in charge of. So how does that work, Danny? What will be the process of that? Permitting or whatever, would you need, would permitting of any sort?
Round start clearing. Well, I think the clearing would be four trees, five trees. That's basically all the clearing that would need to be done. So.
Josh also mentioned to me on Monday morning that he was gonna check to see about endangered birds or nesting that you can only cut trees down during certain times of the year.
Add some birds and.
And he was gonna make sure that we had those dates before we go forward, but we were gonna try to get out there and mark the trees that need to be cleared.
Basically those, I believe there's five pines that are in an arch right there. That's it.
I'll put a placeholder on the committee, the hole for the 12th, and we're sure at for the November 12th.
As far as what?
Just if some of the financial stuff's together and maybe Josh comes in and says, this is what we're gonna need to, this is what we're gonna need cash wise or donation wise to get it done.
I got the spreadsheet from Josh on Monday morning. I have had very little time to put anything together. That information that I provided to you that I had no idea was going to go out to the other trustees was just answered three questions that you.
I just wanted some concept of where we're at. Yeah, yeah. So just so like I said.
Some of the trustees have reached out to me and said they didn't understand what, you know, it was.
Context, sure.
Yeah, right, right, right. And like I explained, I was answering your questions. Like I didn't know it was.
No, definitely before, because there's like, what's this about? I want people to say, hey, let's get the money, let's get, let's figure out the money here where, where we're at.
Right. And like I said, I just met with Josh Monday morning because, well, I've been sick and out of the country and doing some other things, but, but yeah, I just met with Josh and he gave me the spreadsheet. He gave me a high end figure that is based on zero donations, zero from Bowler, from Ozinga, from anybody. It's just if we were to have to pay cash for all of this, this is what his estimate is. A lot of that will be adjusted because of our donors. Problem with that is right now. We've been stringing these donors along for about two and a half, three years now. And now Josh has to go back. That's why we're trying to figure out a date. You mentioned in an email to me that you want it done for a grand opening for Memorial Day.
Memorial Day or, or, or the 250th anniversary of the United States, one of those would be a good.
Okay, well, we're, we're shooting for Memorial Day and this is what we discussed on Monday morning. Josh wants to break ground March at the very latest. He wants to get the ground cleared now. So everything's ready to go for March and then push. But again, he's now got to go out to the donors and say one more time. It looks like we're ready. Are you with us? That's, that's gonna be, I, I have to wait for that answer. Okay?
Perfect.
Yeah, I see. So I really like before any trees are cut. I'd really like an accounting, you know, and know where we're at before any trees get cut down.
I'll work through that Dennis and you'll be the point person on some of this.
I can, I can guarantee you guys something better than what you saw in that email by, by the next board meeting, maybe sooner. Now, it might need to be tweaked and if there's information you guys don't see on there that you want, let me know. Or let them know so that we can amend it and correct it, but we'll get as much detail down to, you know, each of the monuments, who's sponsoring, what they've paid, what they haven't paid, which are, which they haven't added any contributions towards. You know, the total bricks, this, we'll have it as broken down as we can. Now, we might need some time to add in other things. But we'll, we'll get as much done and get it to you as soon as possible. Cause I agree, it's, it's needed because I want to see it as well. So.
All right, perfect. All right. Thank you. Thank you for coming out here. Any other business? What is the second meeting? Yep. Assistant Village Administrator Jim.
Evening Mayor, Village Board, residents. It's exciting to be here today. I was not at our last village board meeting. So I didn't have a chance to talk to you guys about the, the speaker testing we did at the band shell. If you're anywhere near downtown, you probably heard the speakers, the demo that we had. It was very loud and exciting. And a, a good foreshadowing to what concerts will be like at the band shell starting next summer. One of the things I want to point out is the current speaker system, the way it's set up, there's some dead spots, especially on the sled hill and, and outside of the immediate area in front of the band shell. So the speakers that we're demoing are a little bit more directional and fill in some of the dead spots. So when we have a concert there, you could not only hear, but hopefully feel it and it'll be a true rock concert. It'll be exciting, all within the well realm of our noise standards and keep it on, on what's going on with neighbors. So once Rich Meltzer right now is in the process of getting quotes, so we could present those to you guys. It was part of the budget for this year. So our plan is to have these speakers in place by the startup next concert season. So I'll keep you abreast as soon as we have more information and more of the specifics on those. Like Administrator Guchow had mentioned, today was Kim Beederman's last day with the village. She started here about 14 months ago and I would say exceeded expectations for the role. She did a really good job, not only building relationships and focusing on the business retainment aspect of her position, building good relationships with businesses in the community. She went to Las Vegas earlier this year for the ICSC conference and I, I would say had a very successful trip out there. Built relationships with developers for the village and also got really well networked at the, the local regional ICSC conferences. And one of the nice things that she did for us is she left a lot of leads and everything that was, she was working on all wrapped up fairly nicely for us to continue the relationships that she built. So we're grateful for Kim's dedication and service to the village. On a personal note, very excited for her new opportunities in Arlington Heights and we're excited to see what she can do there. Also on the business development front, tomorrow I'll be in Libertyville attending a Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Roadshow event. This is letting communities in this area know what opportunities that we could pass on to where businesses are available through the DCEO office for the state of Illinois. So I'm excited to do some networking with some of the state folks that will be at this event. And also it's a good opportunity for recruitment efforts for Kim's position. I'll have that in mind as well as we do some net networking at the event. On the community development side, a few weeks ago, Dennis had taken over the business department aspect of working with Sonda and Mark with staff concerns with building permits and those sorts of things as they moved through the department. I've been there as secondary support if they have issues or questions or that sort of thing. And one of the things I'm very proud of is Sonda and Mark both. And I mentioned this last time too, have a very customer service focus with the work that they do while maintaining the integrity of our codes for the village. It's exciting to, to see them work together and the productivity out of the department. One of the things that Mark has been doing is putting together. We haven't had a consolidated list of fees and things that the village charges for as far as permits or impact fees and that sort of thing. So we're in the process of compiling all that. So it's much easier for not only developers, residents and staff to have that in more of a centralized location. On the IT front, Amy has been busy. Honestly, since the day I met her, but especially with the village hall transition, we now have the village hall server, the laser feast migration done. She's been working with finance with the BSNA transition that we're experiencing this week. Rachel Thiel, also in the finance department, has been very helpful with us with messaging, getting out to residents about the, the changing in the water billing and the online payments and that sort of thing. So Rachel's been a tremendous help as far as, as well as Amy with this whole transition to the BSNA software. Amy is also in the process. We found a partner for our phone system who will help us identify the best phone system for village hall and village wide phones. So that's been a big project that she's been working on for quite a while now. So that will be coming before you guys in the coming months as well. And finally, I just wanted to thank Bob Retner at the, in the public works department. I don't know if you guys noticed the flagpole in front of village hall today. We finally have the United States, United States flag and the Illinois flag flying above village hall and it looks beautiful. And it's illuminated tonight with the light Bob just installed. So thank you, Bob and Dennis for getting that taken together. If you guys don't have any other questions, that concludes my report.
Trustee Pierce.
Know you guys are slammed right now and everybody's looks like they're abandoning ship on you and your hats are getting more and more and so is Dennis's. At some point, maybe once we are acclimating a new administrator, we can get some sort of checklist or whatever that shows the progress, the status of everything that we got going on out there, such as the marketplace, you know? Starbucks is now done. So that'd be a cross off on the list, things that have been approved and haven't been done in two or three years. We could say what, you know, keep moving it up.
I gotta wipe all that stuff on there for four years if you want to go look at that.
Like related to like development.
Yeah, like where we are in our development of the community and businesses and stuff, because we hear about stuff here. And then a year later we're going, well, where's the solar farm that was being built on North Avenue? Or the nursing home.
No, and I saw, I saw St. Peters is listed against that.
For St. Peters, you know, just so we have an idea what the status of everything is, but I know you're busier and.
Hopefully we'll be doing some hiring soon.
Hey, they're gonna watch these videos. So make sure you're very, everyone's very very nice in the meetings because you know, the next village administrator is gonna be like, I better watch a couple of these meetings. Yeah, everyone courtesy, everyone's so kind to each other on the board and the staff.
I can be mean. You want me to be mean?
No, we don't want to be mean. We want them to watch the video and be like, that's where I want to go. It's Mayberry over there.
We may be feisty. We may discuss a lot of things, but we get a lot of stuff done here that other communities don't get done. I'm pretty proud of any.
Yeah, no, I agree.
To your point, trustee Pierce, the village attorney does a good job. Like periodically, I think it's quarterly. They have an updated sheet on their website of different projects and where they are. And I, I think something like that would be well received by, at the very least, the board, but also for residents and.
The Thursday newsletter once in a while, maybe.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
We used to receive a report from, from Director Garrigan at times that had an update on all the different properties and everything else, but it was for internal purposes, which I think what is what trustee Pierce was referring to. But if we can get something like that, but yeah, then anything that can be public is.
He must have got special treatment. I never saw that one.
He said, it's on occasion, on occasion.
If I want to know status, use Facebook and everybody tells me what we're doing before, even though we're doing it.
Well, thank you for your report. We'll get you out of here before you have to answer more questions. Cause I'm sure Katie has some things to talk about. No, you're, don't, don't apologize in advance. That's not a good. Happy to overlook it.
All kinds of stuff. I got a presentation. You putting that up, Jim? All right.
Is this all the Facebook comments on the park? You're just gonna scroll through them?
Just gonna go, yeah, it's gonna just be on scroll. Um, okay. Is it up? No. Well, while we're waiting for that, something unrelated to Centennial Park is we have Harvest Fest this weekend. So hopefully I'll see all of your smiling faces out there for all of the fun and joy that comes with the season of fall.
Can, no, Kim's gone. Can we get a place, a place a report on how many people usually come to that thing? Cause I have no idea how much candy.
Don't have access to Placer, but I would love that. So I'll find out.
People we ever have? Yeah.
Jim's your guy.
Jim, just put that on your tab.
Changed the hours around on Harvest Fest and Treat the Streets, didn't we?
We did slightly, yes. So from my understanding, Treat the Streets was from 12 to two and then Harvest Fest was from like two to five, maybe somewhere around there. So we changed it for, to be Treat the. two to five, maybe somewhere around there. So we changed it for, um, to be Treat the Streets from eleven to one and Harvest Fest from twelve to four. Um, the reasoning behind that is because I've treated the streets with my children and there's no way I'm going to treat the streets for two hours in the chaos and then go home and then come back out to an event. So to have the overlap with, um, people who want to treat the streets early and then go to the event or treat the streets later and not spend as much time or come and go, um, by having that one hour overlap, I think it gives families more opportunity to take part in both activities, um, instead of one and reducing the likelihood of them coming back out. You're welcome. Okay, so I just wanted to give a, um, update on Centennial Park um, and the renovation we are doing over there. Um, a little history of the project, which Jim has already got up, thank you. Um, we, okay, so the, uh, comprehensive master plan for the Parks and Recreation Department was approved and adopted in May of twenty twenty four. Um, Centennial Park was, um, identified as a priority at that time to, um, get on the, on the shortlist of um, getting it fixed up. Um, so the village in, um, consulted with Hitchcock Design Group, um, who was going to manage the application for an OSLAD grant, which they did. Um, there was a public meeting. Um, the information was then presented to the board in August of twenty twenty four. And they, uh, submitted the grant, um, prepared it and put the application in. Uh, then we received that grant in January of this year. Um, between January and May, um, it was kind of, okay, what are we doing? You know, I had just started, um, and there wasn't really a lot going on. We did kick off the project in May of twenty twenty five. Um, and between May of twenty five and September, um, it's been a lot of behind the scenes work, you know, they were testing the soil and doing geotechnical things and, um, all that kind of stuff, surveys to make sure that the site was ready for um, the plans that we had. Um, so in September, uh, the Hitchcock Design went out. Um, they set up an RFP for playground design and in October this month, um, we received, um, public input about that design. Next please. Objective. So the objective of the project is to bring Centennial Park up to date, modernize it. Uh, make it more inclusive, um, for, um, you know, excuse me, accessibility upgrades, educational elements, things like that. Um, that all of those things were identified for the phase one of the Centennial Park. Um, phase two has, uh, subsequent improvements that if we were to implement a phase two when, if and when, um, those elements would be included at that time. Jim, thank you. Um, so the project timeline, we're still fairly early in the actual project. Um, so May to August was program and analysis and right now we are, um, at the end of the, excuse me, the design development phase and starting the construction document phase. Go ahead, Jim. Alright, so in the design development phase, um, that was our second opportunity for public input. Um, so, um, we, hold on, I'm sorry. My notes. Okay, we re, we put out the, uh, renderings of the playground design that we received in response to the request for proposals. Um, we received six designs from three vendors. Um, we narrowed those six designs down to four designs, put them on display, yes.
At the Parks Board, did you say we, was that the Parks Board that narrowed that down or was that just Hitchcock?
No, that was staff.
Okay, okay.
Um, and if anyone would like to see the two that we didn't include, you're more than welcome to look at them. I think you'll feel the same. Um, and, uh, so we narrowed that down to, uh, four designs, which then we put on display here in, um, Village Hall Lobby. And, uh, put social media posts out, you know, asking people to come in and vote, bring your kids, you know, things like that. Um, the, uh, community really wanted online options, obviously. Um, that is a lot more accessible for folks, so we figured out how to get that on there. Um, we received about fifty, well, more than fifty, maybe like seventy-five votes um, in person. A lot of them were from children, which are adorable, written in their little children's handwriting. Um, and they had very good feedback and comments. Um, and then the online comments, once the renderings were put up, uh, was overwhelming. Um, there was over five hundred comments, as you probably all are aware, um, eh, about the, uh, support of not changing the park and keeping the design and keeping the wooden park, um, for a variety of reasons, which I think we're all aware about, aware of. Um, so unfortunately, due to many different factors, which we will get into, uh, we are not able to keep that park as it is. Um, go ahead, Jim, thanks. So, uh, some facts, right? Um, as I'm sure you all know, once we touch the park, right, to, uh, change it or improve it, we have to bring it up to code, just like your house, right? You can't do electrical work in your house without bringing it up to the current code. So it's the same thing for our parks. Um, we are required to comply with the US Access Board Guidelines for Play Areas. That is a, um, uh, an extension of the, um, ADA um, and their accessibility guidelines. So the US Access Board has specific, um, guidelines, specific to playgrounds, um, whether, uh, for public, um, indoor structures, things like that, they're, um, they're, uh, laid out separately. Um, also in Illinois, we are required to comply with the US Consumer Product Safety Commission, Public Playground Safety Handbook. Say that five times fast, um, which outlines general safety requirements along with surfacing, fall zones, things of that nature. Um, and then once our playground is installed and completed and we're all excited, it has to be, um, inspected by a certified safety playground inspector to get that, uh, playground safety certification. Okay, Jim? Um, additionally, we, um, submitted the grant to OSLAD for, um, very specific things. So the phase one of this project must include the things that are on that list. So the number one thing there is playground replacement. Um, other things we're doing are the shelter, the renovated courts, fitness stations, a beanbag toss, um, accessibility improvements, so on and so forth. So we've committed to making these changes and updates within the OSLAD grant application. And they approved our application based on these elements being included. Um, there is a little bit of wiggle room. So if we were saying, oh, we're, we don't want to have, um, pickleball and tennis, we want to have racquetball instead. To the OSLAD granting people, they would say, oh, that's a racket sport. That's very comparable, that's probably fine, but that's still something we would have to go and get, um, written permission to change. Okay, Jim, thank you. Um, additionally, um, we've got some, um, funding, uh, facts to share. Um, so right now in the cost opinion provided to us from Hitchcock, there is a one hundred and fifty thousand dollar allocation for the playground, um, specifically. So the park, one point two million for phase one, the playground specifically, a hundred and fifty thousand. That includes a hundred and ten thousand dollars for the purchase of the equipment and forty thousand dollars to install, you know, the labor and things like that. Um, and we have to have our project completed in order to get the rest of the money or not send back to the first three hundred thousand that we received already. Um, it has to be completed with all of our filing and reporting done by January of twenty twenty seven, which is just over a year away. So, um, based on the community feedback that, uh, we all saw, um, I need to find out how you guys would like to proceed. Um, I, I'd like some direction and some clarification. There are some options that we can consider, um, that, you know, I put down here. Uh, there's probably several more things that I didn't think of that are probably in your heads and I'd love to hear those things. Um, some of the things that I thought of, we could, um, go out for a new request for proposal, um, asking for specifically a wood or composite type play structure that may more resemble, um, something that we have now, um, within the currently allocated budget of a hundred and ten thousand dollars for equipment. Um, we could go out for a new RFP uh, with traditional playground equipment, sort of like the ones that you probably saw in the renderings. Um, however, these options would, we would need to consider the project timeline if that would push us back. How much that would push, push us back to make sure we, um, still met the January twenty seven, uh, deadline. Um, we could also increase the playground equipment budget. So, um, this would be by either adding additional money to the six hundred thousand dollars that the village has, uh, committed or by reducing the budget in other areas of the renovation, um, if possible, and redirect those funds to playground equipment purchase. Or we could accept one of the currently proposed designs. And again, possibly other solutions as well. Uh, okay, Jim? So as you are well aware, um, the Sequoit Creek Park Playground is somewhere around a million dollars, right? State of the art, beautiful, wonderful, fantastic playground. Um, and the, when you compare that and look at Centennial Park, that park we have allocated a hundred and ten or a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to replace. So it's quite a stark difference, right? So the expectation of the community, um, maybe was more in line with a million dollar playground versus what we have available to us in our, um, in our grant application for a hundred and fifty-ish thousand dollars. Um, okay, uh, for comparison sake, I wanted to share with you, um, Algonquin had a very similar, um, scenario uh, that they dealt with. They had a wooden park, as you see there on the left, um, beloved, very sentimental, um, even has a little castle theme itself. Um, it was the town's, you know, star park, everyone loved it. Um, they had the same type of problem. They ended up renovating with a wood composite, um, and kind of a hybrid. You can see on the right. Um, however, this was a like ten thousand square foot area, um, and it cost roughly a million dollars. So our surface area, our footprint is very close to the same. Um, so that's, that's what the difference is. You know, we're looking at maybe an eight hundred thousand dollar difference in what we are planning to do and what the community is telling us they want. As you can see, this is why I'm kind of feeling like I'm in a pickle.
That's not a pickleball court.
That's right. So, um, I'd love to hear your thoughts or answer any questions that you have, um. You know, this has been keeping me up at night. So tell me everything, cause I just wanted, I want to do what's gonna make our community happy. I know that's what we all want. Um, so help me see, see the vision.
I mean, I think a lot of this is, um, putting even your presentation with your, uh, blessing on, I mean, I think it's educating people, like obviously, look at the same thing with the, not to bring up a, a bad topic, but look at the preschool. The laws and standards change over time. So what we're doing in nineteen ninety-eight is not, we're not able to replicate it. So it's just, you know, that educational piece, um, I was writing down, could we maybe, could maybe a private entity take this apart and put it on their property, the, the wooden one, and we just put a new park in?
No, because it's pressurized wood, like hazardous chemical.
Yes, so, um, yeah, I, that's, I mean, I feel bad, I mean, you found out fast, the Antioch Facebook, uh, responses.
It's my third nervous breakdown.
Yeah, so, well, yeah, I want to hear from the board on suggestions and, like I said, if there's a way to reallocate some funds to make it a little bigger, but you know, we're talking eight to ten times the amount of money, we're not talking fifty or a hundred grand.
Right.
Trustee?
Um, thank you for your presentation, first of all. Uh, I think that's all information we were aware of, but I don't think the public is. So I think it's neatly, I agree with the mayor that it probably should get out there, either by that presentation or something else. Um, the only thing I will say is, I think it, we, we need to get another quote on some options that are similar to what we have, maybe not as big, just so we have that in front of us to make a decision. Because it's not fair to us to say, yeah, we're gonna increase it fifty thousand dollars or a hundred thousand dollars and find out that it's still a million dollars. But, so we need to have some reality checks, so we need to see what it would cost to build something similar. And then just to confirm, I mean, I know the answer is, I believe, the idea of, that's been thrown out there on social media about just rehabbing the existing structure. Is that allowed or not?
It is not, because the current structure is not accessible. And once you start renovating it or improving it or replacing it, you know what I mean? You have to make a big improvement and make it accessible. You know, like, like if you replace one piece of wood, okay, that's a, that's a repair, right? But if we're renovating it, if we're gonna be like, oh, we, we're gonna take this whole section down and rebuild it, now we've crossed like a threshold.
I, I assume that, but I think that's what, a lot of the comments that I read were, why can't we do this? And then the other comment was about volunteers and they'd like to volunteer, but we all know how that works. It's trying to get volunteers is, is pulling teeth.
Oh, I so badly wanted to reply to everyone.
No, but, uh, I appreciate, I think, you know, the problem's gonna be, and, and Trustee Martinez mentioned it earlier, is we have a lot of needs and we can't make every park incredible. I mean, it would be great if we could, but we just don't have the funds or resources to do so. So we have to do what we can to make it safe, number one, and then accessible because of the rules and everything else. And that might mean that that's gonna have to change. I, I love the park as it is, my kids play there, I get it. But at the same time, we have to be stewards of the tax dollars and for the whole community, not just that one park. And we have a lot of parks that need work. So, but I do think we owe it to ourselves to get some pricing on structures that are more in line with what we had. Just so that we have the ability to say, this we could do for a hundred and fifty, this is gonna be seven hundred and fifty. You know, we, we can make a decision. Right now we have the hundred and fifty, but we don't know for sure what this would cost. So I think getting some options on that would be something I'd like us to, to, to see.
Okay, I will, um, just follow that up with, um, we have to make a decision here pretty quickly about what we're going to do. Um, I don't know that we'll be able to push this off to the November twelfth board meeting, so um, I will work through that with Jeff and figure out how to.
Whatever we can.
Whatever we can do, yes. Just a forewarning, yes, okay, great.
Um, hey, I'm all for naming rights.
Yeah, that's what I said. I, I just wrote on a, a name, a name park, yeah, like, yeah, yeah. Another Italian thing, I was thinking, yeah.
Um, I think some of it is nostalgia, right? And, and I think that if we find something that has maybe, uh, that theme running across, like you mentioned, uh, in your presentation, we should shoot for an attempt to find, uh, just some design tweaks. In hopes to appease some of our constituents and residents.
You know, I didn't help build Centennial Park, I've enjoyed it over the many years, so I, I think it was a shock to everybody to see the designs. It was a shock to me. To me, they were basic, plain, cookie cutter, hundred thousand dollar park, you know, which I don't think anybody expected. And it may be the answer we have to give because of finances and budgeting and the allocating twenty, twenty percent of money we're giving somewhere else to somebody else. Um, it, so it's all a thing. Um, but the designs that I saw did nothing to at least honor what it was in the past. You know, there was a lot of heart and effort into that and the, what you see there is, you could, you could go to any town USA and see that again. So there was just nothing, it, I think we need to, and I, I know we're under a timeline gun and people want us to spend money and contract parts and equipment so they can get on order. It takes ten years now to get it imported from China or wherever it's coming and we don't know what the tariff cost is gonna be and all that good story that they're gonna tell us. But I, I think we need to come up with something that at least honors what was done in the past and what we see right now doesn't honor that.
The castle theme you're talking.
Somewhat into, you know, even if there's like one section of a castle theme in there.
Yeah.
You know, or maybe we come up with a design that says, this is what we can have right now, but in five years of saving and scrimping, we can add this in. And, you know, a phased.
Add, add improvements or additions to the.
We come up with a basic thing that honors what it is, and then we over time build on it, even though I know in this town, things don't get over timed, they get over forgotten over time.
Changing that.
Yeah, I know. Or change, but what I'm trying to say is, maybe in this case, a phased approach to over 10 or 15, 20 years, you know, coming up with a final design. I, I just, I, I just don't see what is in front of us right now as being it. And it may have also helped if the whole design of the whole park was there instead of just the playground, you know?
Yeah, and
Because.
They're all different companies that do all the different parts. Yes, I know that that's hard.
Our conceptual drawing, so people can see, oh, it's not just this, this area right here. There's, there's furnishing, there's, there's, there's pickleball, there's bean ball.
Yes, and I think, to your point, trustee, the public in general confuses the term park with the term playground. And in my world, park is the property, and playground is the area that you have a structure and play on. And people confuse those words, and I think that that is part of the education that we can do. Maybe within another slide here.
Maybe, but at this point, I don't see this, what we saw already as being the answer. And I think maybe 75 cute votes may be cute and nice.
Oh, they had a lot of, they had a lot of thoughts. Don't worry.
Thank God they were there. But when I saw it, I was like, oh, this is not going to be pretty.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
No, I, I didn't do the designs.
Yeah.
Just work here.
Trustee Peterson?
I was there when it built. I was part of it. And my oldest son was five years old and drew one of the little monsters inside the castle, and he's going to be 40. So it's, it's been a while. Possibly, piggybacking on what trustee Pierce said, possibly, maybe wood composite to build or rebuild just the castle part. So that when the residents come up, that's a, that's familiar. No one, we all want new things all the time, and we want safe things, but no one wants to lose their familiar. So, and that's a, that's a heartfelt thing for this community. And I'm thinking if they walk up and they see that, it'll just make their heart sing. However, it has to be safe. We have to be compliant. Things have changed in 35, 40 years. And, and it's a good thing. You know, this only protects all those children who are playing there. So I'm thinking if we could just maybe do a little, a small part of what is there. And not exact, just the illusion. And then put in other things. Yes, yeah. That doesn't cost a million dollars.
Yes.
I know it's a tall order, but it was a great big deal when that park was in. And the goal, just so you know, to build that park, Antioch raised 100,000. And back in the day, it was a lot of money.
1992, that's, that's a million dollars.
It was, it was a lot of money.
It's like, it's like a month with the consultant.
And the entire town came out. The entire town came out.
They told me 2,000 people in seven days. It's amazing.
And it, it was built in seven days. It was pretty cool.
Yeah.
But, you know, now we move forward. But maybe with just a little bit of nostalgia.
Thank you. Is that it?
Yeah, very good.
All right. Thank you very much. I didn't need any of my paper.
All right, good.
I like that.
Thank you. Last but not least, Public Works Building Department. All right, I'm getting my stuff out now.
First, I wasn't going to talk about it, and I guess I probably should have, but trustee Pierce brought up some, some of the projects. And I can provide a little information on the North Avenue Solar Farm. We're actually finalizing permitting, letter of credits and bonds with that. So that should be a permitted project here in near future. CarMax, that has actually kind of went stale for a while. I think the last time we had comments related to the engineering was in June or July. They did reach out that they've hired an architect, but that was about it. They, they still have quite a bit on the civil set to finalize with the village here. What's the other project? Senior Center? Oh, yeah, I have not heard anything about that, but there is one more, and I can't think of it right now. No, not St. Peters.
Public Works?
Public Works. If you drive, if you drive past there, they've been pretty active. Tree clearing's been done. Cell fence installed, security fence around the property. Minor masquerading. We are planning a groundbreaking, so hopefully I'll have a date scheduled here in the next couple of weeks that hopefully you all can join us out there, and we'll have a rendering of what it'll look like on a, probably a four by eight sheet that do a little photo op with. So I'll follow up with details on that.
While you're talking about Public Works.
Yes.
There may have been two of us who voted no on it, but there were options that weren't presented to us that should have been covered and voted on too. But we were only given one choice that night. I'd like to see the other choices and the other dollars, because you need a fuel station. We need to partner that with the fire department. You need other things over there, which was not given to us that night.
Fully understood. I did plan on bringing that back after I understood some of the, the issues that were out there that don't have a dollar amount on it, like the North Avenue widening. I did not expect what the county initially provided as feedback, what they were going to, I guess, require. What we submitted is substantially less. It's basically a two-foot widening, widening of the road. But they originally talked about a larger widening, milling and repaving of the whole intersection.
Well, you're putting a Starbucks in there too, aren't you? So that could pay for it.
Yeah. So I was very hesitant on getting too far ahead of myself with getting the options, the alternates for the PW, and then coming back and saying, I need $300,000 for road widening. And you would have said, why didn't you tell me this before? So I, I held back with a little cush, a safety net that at least I wasn't going above the, the amount that was presented. The elevator, that alternate that, that needed to be decided, that is part of the building. That had to be decided when we did it, just because it gets built, built with the building. The fuel station can be later, and the storage bins are an exterior, and that's, that's the amount that I set aside. The storage bins, we did not procure any contracts or execute any contracts with that contractor for that work. So, but I appreciate it, and I'll, I'll bring the fuel station back to you. All right, well, six, we did pull the pump and the motor, the whole assembly, the column piping. The well company took it back to their facility, tore it apart, found out that there was a seized bearing that dropped into the motor from the pump. So basically, I have to rebuild that whole well assembly. I think it's right around $20,000. We initially anticipated that cost. So hopefully, they have the pump and motor on order, and we will get that back in service here shortly. Some of the, the crews within the PW, I had a crew out completing the asphalt patching, the second round of this area after the last board meeting that I explained some areas then, included 10 locations and roughly 26 tons completed. And one of the areas, as you may have noticed at the entrance of the library pool, we redid that entrance roughly 60 feet of it. It was in pretty bad shape. Another crew, they just started parkway tree trimming right now. It's a good time to start it, as the trees start to go dormant. And then we'll proceed through the winter with that work as the weather allows us. Right now, we're just focusing on identified areas that were brought to our attention are causing issues between school buses, garbage trucks, and so forth. And then we'll go into other areas like a complete subdivision and focus on attending every tree and addressing that individually. And then, once we're done with that, we'll move on to the next subdivision. Recently, a round of hydrant flushing was performed. This round in the fall is more of our short flushing session. It mainly focuses on dead ends and cul-de-sacs. But that, that individual that was working nights completed that last week. The contractor that I contracted for crack sealing came in two weeks ago and completed, I think within one day, he completed all the roads that I gave him with, within the program, which was a small portion that we did not do on Bowles Road near Henning Drive, all Hidden Creek subdivision, and then Longview. So hope to keep that program continuing over the years and maybe expanding it. Sidewalk lifting program, that contractor has also started. Right now, he is, is basically, he's scheduled to go to certain areas that we have either identified a trip hazard or there's been complaints about. Once those areas are, are corrected, then he is going to go into a subdivision as we typically set up. And he'll go throughout the whole subdivision as we give him a, a list that we have visually inspected, and he'll make his lifting within those areas. Right now, we're going to go into the Woods of Antioch. Yes, it is. And then the Woods project is fully complete. As you've seen, the first pay request was on payables tonight, and we'll hold a 10% retainage. Right now, for, for the pay request, that project came in $45,000 under the original contract. So we saved some money there. Outside of that, that's all I have.
They do some of the replacements of the stuff over, or they plan? I know that you said they were out there, Breezy Hill, for like the.
They have, they have not done any replacements yet.
But that's still in the war.
Yes. And from what I understand, they are doing the Christmas tree, so I'm gonna need to.
Go back to the Charlie Brown tree for one more time.
They had, well, yeah, I may have to. Otherwise, we may do it in-house. Hopefully, it'll look as good as the contractor does it. But yeah, with the timing, the contractor gets logged up, basically, I think we schedule him in August and.
Over the lights?
Yeah, September to December, he's, he's fully booked, so.
Our fire plug maintenance program going. You know, the hydrants, making sure they all work, and everybody's got an active hydrant. And then when they open them up like they did on Anita, that they had to skip two to get one that worked.
I mean, usually, we'll have a good understanding of that in the spring, when it's a full flush hydrant. There are a full system flush of hydrants. They attend basically just about every hydrant. So they'll, they'll be able to understand if there's issues.
That's when they check them, is in the spring, not the fall.
In the fall, that's more of a reduced amount that we do. We solely focus on the dead ends and the cul-de-sacs. Oh, one other project, sorry, was the Coblenz. That's what I was thinking of. Most of the site has been masqueraded, utilities installed. The home builder, Lennar, I believe they've submitted two permits for their models right now. They plan on continuing over the winter submitting. I think they have eight. They have a small trailer out there that they'll be utilizing for the construction of those models. And then they'll proceed with building possibly three, three homes a month, or it could be up to seven. So that was the other project.
All right, thank you. All right, do you have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
All right, motion, trustee Peterson, second trustee Bluthart, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, meeting is adjourned at 9:19.